Our city council meeting for February the 26th, 2015 to order. I'll ask that you please rise for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Most loving God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings that each of us have bestowed upon us on a daily blessing. Let us never forget that if it wasn't for those blessings, our lives would not be as enriched as they are. Give us wisdom, give us understanding, give us love one for another. God guard and direct what we do and what we say, in thy precious name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing we have is a Navy Reserve Centennial Week proclamation, and I'm gonna ask Pat Keeverly, did I get it right? Huh? Kaverney? Kaverney?
He's coming anyway.
From the Navy League, please come forward. I'm sorry.
No problem.
I got Chikora High School English. Good to see you. Madam Clerk, would you please read the proclamation?
Whereas the Naval Appropriations Act of 1916 dated March 3rd, 1915, established a United States Naval Reserve, and whereas the Naval Reserve was officially formed in 1915, just as the United States was emerging as a world power and just following the outbreak of World War I, but the concept of the American citizen sailor actually precedes America itself. Follow Navy Reserve history from its militia-like roots to its official existence over the past 100 years, and whereas even before the Continental Congress established the Continental Navy, there were bands of residents in seaside towns such as Machias, Maine? Yeah? Thank you. Engaging in combat with British warships inspired by the spirited battles of Minutemen. And whereas even before the Continental Congress established the Continental Navy, I'm sorry, I'm repeating myself, whereas by the end of World War II, there were millions of Americans actively engaged in that conflict as members of the Navy, and the vast majority of them were reservists. And whereas from the American Revolution to the ongoing engagements in the Middle East, American citizen sailors reservists have performed heroically in service to their nation, creating and maintaining a proud heritage and history built on the same core values that guide all of America's Navy: honor, courage, commitment. Now therefore be it resolved that I, our Keith Summy, Mayor of the City of North Charleston, do hereby proclaim March 3rd through March 7th, 2015, as Navy Reserve Centennial Week in the City of North Charleston, and urge all residents to participate wholeheartedly in its observance.
I think all of us here know that North Charleston is still a Navy town, even though the base doesn't reflect that anymore. North Charleston was built around the shipyard. I never will forget, we had such a surge, when you look at the history of North Charleston, in the 40s, when World War II started, we went from 1,700 civilian employees to 17,000 in one year. And we had all the housing develop around that. The Navy has been an integral part of our growth and where we are today, and our reservists, no matter what branch, are really the stronghold of this nation that we live in. The citizen warrior is the stronghold. And we greatly appreciate what the Reserve has done, what the Navy has done for this community over the years, and we look forward to helping you celebrate these every year if you would like. My blessing.
That works, thank you very much.
Say a few words?
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Bobby, why don't you?
My colleague is a representation of the active duty Navy and the Naval Reserve, certainly here in this community. Bobby Maslow is the XO of the Navy Operational Support Center here in town, and they take care of the hundreds of reservists today who are in uniform, many of them are deployed. But over time, many of you may know that there have been thousands of people in this community who have worn the uniform as reservists, and they will continue to do so. We genuinely appreciate this, and I must say that North Charleston is one of the few cities in the country right now that has embraced the centennial to the extent that you have, and we really appreciate it. We also want to send a special thank you, sir, to Lisa Reynolds, who is part of the North Charleston team, who has absolutely pushed us to the success that we know we're going to have. And she's gonna keep pushing us for the next 10 days or so, but that's okay. Thank you so much.
We're glad to have you, my blessing. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, next we have the introduction of Zucker Middle School Semester Principals' List for Honor Roll Students, and I'm going to ask Principal Jacob Perlmutter to please come forward and introduce his children.
Thank you, Mayor Summy, and distinguished gentlemen and gentlewomen of North Charleston City Council, thank you very much for having us tonight. I'm here tonight as the proud principal of Zucker Middle School, and it's my privilege to introduce the Principals' List Honor Roll for Semester One. Principals' List Honor Roll students, what that means is that they have an all-A average in all classes for both Quarter One and Quarter Two, and all classes includes their connections classes or related arts classes for Semester One of this school year. So we have 30 students to introduce to you tonight, and if it's okay with you, I'll just turn the podium so we can have them.
Absolutely.
Okay. Great, and if I could at this time ask our teachers to come down, we have some of their teachers here tonight, and Ms. Buckeaster. Even reluctantly, they've had a long day. But really, I'd like to take a second to mention that none of us would be where we are without great teachers, so we all owe a debt of gratitude to those people who, you know, spend their time working so hard with us during the day. All right, now for this, again, the Principals' List Honor Roll for Semester One, if I call, when I call your name, if you'll come up and I'll sort of pass your certificate down, and you grab the certificate from over here and come up and stand in front of council. God wins, Teushime. Everybody do this thing. Good job, Bones. Isaac Thunderberg. Janiah Black. Have to double up, just in the interest of time, we have a lot of Principals' Lists. Malachi, she's got you over there. Janiah Black. Kiara Brown. Not here. Eric Churchill. Leslie Coronando Hernandez. If you can't tell, these are the students that the teachers love to see walk in their classroom every day. You can see as they come down how it brings a smile to their face. Great job. Jalen Dewees. Thank you, and proud parents, I appreciate you holding your applause. Reyna Garcia. Sierra Hurt. Alyssa Kapinos, straight from basketball practice. Joel Oriano Torres. Joanna Vargas George, or Jorge? All right, boys and girls, if you'll just turn around real quickly so you can face the councils, I want them to be able to see the future leaders of their community, and councilmen and women, I expect you are all on Principals' List Honor Roll when you were in middle school as well. So I really, I really do sincerely want to take a second to say that these are the young men and women who will be leading our community in the future, and I expect that that's why you so graciously invite us here each year, so that you can see the future leaders of our community. You know, North Charleston is a great place to live, work, and play, and this is some of the reasons why. So thank you all for having us here tonight. Mayor, do you mind if we do a photo op with you quickly?
Absolutely, let Dot have it.
I'd just like to say to the parents, like I did last year, it's a new group of children, I don't recognize some of them, but to you wonderful parents that take your time and care so much to develop and bring all this beauty before us, and the praise has to go out to all of you. And these young teachers, they look like the students. They don't look like teachers, they look like the students themselves, thanks to you. But the parents and all you wonderful, beautiful children, please keep it up. Very proud of all of you.
Our attorney and I were noticing that the girls far outnumber the boys. So we're gonna have to encourage the boys to work a little harder next year, but I'm very proud of each and every one of you because you are the future of our community. I was talking this morning at the North Charleston School of the Arts, and was talking about how I got involved in being able to publicly speak, started in the fourth grade, when I played Hansel and Gretel in Collin County. Yeah, well, that night I overslept, so I couldn't even watch the speech, you're right. But it was an experience for me that led me to where I am today, and what you're doing is preparing yourself for the future, to be the future leaders of this community, to take us to that next level. And I'm just very proud that you're part of the City of North Charleston, you're part of one of our best schools in the City of North Charleston. Jerry Zucker would be very proud if he was here tonight to help instill this gratitude upon you. Now where do you want me to put the picture?
Why don't we do this, since there's so few of you?
If you'll step forward, boys and girls sliding on one side and behind in the air.
Little girl girl.
You know, and I noticed all the, most of the boys are short. None of them are fat. It's not the same about me. Yeah. You're up. You are up. Can I get you three to come down here? Here we go. You didn't miss each other. This is Kyle. Right. Yeah, we can see you. Look like a grown pup. All right. Kyle's getting one. Come on over, don't, don't. Let me add one thing to the parents. Every successful school in this country is successful when the parents engage in the children's education. And I want to thank you for being a part of your children's education, because you can't educate them and then leave it at school, it has to be followed through at home. And I can tell you, each of these children are very lucky, they have parents that care about their futures. God bless you for taking care. God gave us a wonderful gift when we were children, but he also gave us an awesome responsibility. And I'm glad to see you're living that responsibility. Thank you very much. Keep it up, parents, keep it up. There's a place in the Navy.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Rusk.
Y'all are welcome to stay, but I know you have homework to do.
Madam Clerk, please continue with the printed agenda.
First item on the agenda is a request to approve the minutes from the February 12th, 2015 city council meeting.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Astle?
Aye.
Mr. Jerome?
Aye.
Mr. Jameson?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Mr. Olds?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Hart?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Stigler?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye. Madam Clerk, can we take items two through five?
If you'd like.
Thank you.
Item two is the final reading of an ordinance amending chapters 11 and 13 of the Municipal Code of North Charleston. Item three is the final reading of an ordinance rezoning the property known as 2160 Ironrod Court from V2 General Business to M1 Light Industrial, and an amendment to the comprehensive plan, future land use map for the entire parcel, changing it from conservation to light industrial. Item four is a request, I'm sorry, item four is the final reading of an ordinance to rezone those properties shown from R2 Multi-Family Residential to B1 Limited Business, and a concurrent amendment to the comprehensive plans, future land use map for those parcels, changing them from redevelopment priority to neighborhood commercial. You said five, too, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Item five is the first reading of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding and any and all documents necessary and appropriate thereto to abandon a portion of Iroquois Street as shown on the memorandum of understanding exhibits, and maintain the property of the Charleston County School District.
Your motion? Move for approval. I have a motion and a second in discussion. Hearing done, the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Astle?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Mr. Jameson?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Mr. Olds?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Hart?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Stigler?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye. Madam Clerk, can we take?
Motion carries unanimously.
Item six through 15 to go.
Wow. You bet. Item six is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into agreements covering area lighting with SCE and G for CUSA Preserve Phase One and Two and Palmetto Commerce Center, Cross Point, and Sightline Drive. Item seven is a resolution accepting property by donation of real property located on 5506 Rivers Avenue, Charleston County, TMS 4720300095. Number eight is a resolution accepting the property by deed of forfeited land commission of real property located on 1967 Arbutus Street in Charleston County, TMS 46603001889. Oh, I messed up. There we go. Item nine is a resolution accepting property by deed of forfeited land commission of real property located on 2026 St. Francis Street in Charleston County, TMS 466030021. Number 10 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of North Charleston and Weber USA Corporation regarding the terms and conditions relating to the construction of Weber Industrial Drive. Number 11 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding pertaining to the establishment of the South Carolina Law Enforcement Division Automated License Plate Reader. Number 12 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of agreement between the Medical University Hospital Authority and the City of North Charleston. Number 13 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a proposal from Trane Systems for engineering services for the rehabilitation of corrugated metal drainage pipe along Northwoods Boulevard. 14 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Davis and Floyd of North Charleston, South Carolina, for engineering services for Parkside Drive Drainage Improvements Phase Two. Number 15 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a proposal from Davis and Floyd for engineering services for the rehabilitation of drainage pipe in Forest Hills Two, Phase Two, and 5338 Hartford Circle. And that's it.
You have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on any of the items?
Mr. Mayor, it's just one, and that's number eight, and I'm pretty sure we'll catch it, because in the item title, I think there's a little difference in numbers and partial number, but they have it right in the explanation of what it is. 46803, it's 0800189. I think they have it 1889.
Should check it and make the changes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Question about item number 10, Weber Industrial Drive?
Yes, sir.
I was looking at the map here, and that goes, is that the same road that goes through the new development, CUSA, it's called CUSA Point? Is this a new road that connects from Palmetto Commerce Parkway to Patriot Boulevard?
This is a new road that is being built in conjunction with the announcement that will be made on the 6th.
Okay, and that comes right out at the Joe Pie Elementary School?
A little bit down from it, sort of in between Joe Pie and the Boeing plant.
Okay, where there's a dirt road currently.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
Is this called Joe Pie One of Our Schools?
Yes, ma'am, it's Joe Pie Elementary School, named after Joe Pie, who is the superintendent of Dorchester Two School, but also a North Charleston high school grad.
Okay, I've never heard of the school.
Yeah.
He needs to go on a tour, ma'am.
All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Astle?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Mr. Jameson?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Mr. Olds?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Hart?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Stigler?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye. Madam Clerk, can we take?
Motion carries unanimously.
Item six through 15 to go.
Wow. You bet. Item six is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into agreements covering area lighting with SCE and G for CUSA Preserve Phase One and Two and Palmetto Commerce Center, Cross Point, and Sightline Drive. Item seven is a resolution accepting property by donation of real property located on 5506 Rivers Avenue, Charleston County, TMS 4720300095. Number eight is a resolution accepting the property by deed of forfeited land commission of real property located on 1967 Arbutus Street in Charleston County, TMS 46603001889. Oh, I messed up. There we go. Item nine is a resolution accepting property by deed of forfeited land commission of real property located on 2026 St. Francis Street in Charleston County, TMS 466030021. Number 10 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of North Charleston and Weber USA Corporation regarding the terms and conditions relating to the construction of Weber Industrial Drive. Number 11 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding pertaining to the establishment of the South Carolina Law Enforcement Division Automated License Plate Reader. Number 12 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of agreement between the Medical University Hospital Authority and the City of North Charleston. Number 13 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a proposal from Trane Systems for engineering services for the rehabilitation of corrugated metal drainage pipe along Northwoods Boulevard. 14 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Davis and Floyd of North Charleston, South Carolina, for engineering services for Parkside Drive Drainage Improvements Phase Two. Number 15 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a proposal from Davis and Floyd for engineering services for the rehabilitation of drainage pipe in Forest Hills Two, Phase Two, and 5338 Hartford Circle. And that's it.
You have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on any of the items?
Mr. Mayor, it's just one, and that's number eight, and I'm pretty sure we'll catch it, because in the item title, I think there's a little difference in numbers and partial number, but they have it right in the explanation of what it is. 46803, it's 0800189. I think they have it 1889.
Should check it and make the changes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Question about item number 10, Weber Industrial Drive?
Yes, sir.
I was looking at the map here, and that goes, is that the same road that goes through the new development, CUSA, it's called CUSA Point? Is this a new road that connects from Palmetto Commerce Parkway to Patriot Boulevard?
This is a new road that is being built in conjunction with the announcement that will be made on the 6th.
Okay, and that comes right out at the Joe Pie Elementary School?
A little bit down from it, sort of in between Joe Pie and the Boeing plant.
Okay, where there's a dirt road currently.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
Is this called Joe Pie One of Our Schools?
Yes, ma'am, it's Joe Pie Elementary School, named after Joe Pie, who is the superintendent of Dorchester Two School, but also a North Charleston high school grad.
Okay, I've never heard of the school.
Yeah.
He needs to go on a tour, ma'am.
All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Astle?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Mr. Jameson?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Mr. Olds?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Hart?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Stigler?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 17 is a request to authorize the mayor to negotiate a purchase and development appropriate documents on Otranto Road.
Your motion? Second. Motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to kind of reiterate what I stated last week on this, and for the public's, because perception sometimes is not accurate, but you know, we have taken on this, and I think you've done a thorough job, you and Mr. Anderson, executive staff and all, with us trying to find location to properly put a facility for our next senior center and our fire station. Though there is difficulty in finding locations up there, that's not already congested, it's
a facility for our next senior center and our fire station. Though there is difficulty in finding locations up there that's not already congested, it's inevitable, we've got to do something and move from where we are to do what we need to do. And I want to make a point here that with all the evaluations that we have done and you've conducted, and done such a great job at, this very property we're buying, the land alone is probably worth the amount of money that we're going to acquire the property for, not to mention that at the minimal cost of a fair conservative number in commercial construction of $300 a square foot, we're saving substantial money here by having existing buildings that we can go in and upfit or retrofit to our needs. So I hope this does fruition as we intend, and we don't go demolishing buildings and starting from scratch, which I do not believe that's our intent. And I think it's a very good project and well worth the money, and a great job.
Anyone else? Hearing none, the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Astle?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Mr. Jameson?
Aye.
Mr. Brinson?
Aye.
Mr. Olds?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Hart?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Stigler?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Summy, take our 1933 title on them.
Eighteen through-
Eighteen. I mean eighteen, I'm sorry.
That's all right, thirty-three title on them.
Eighteen is a request to approve change order number one to the Midland Park Community Center Building Separation Stabilization and ADA Bathrooms. Nineteen is a request for funding to develop a master plan and implementation documents for the historic housing area of the former naval base. Number twenty is a request for funding for design services for Quarters K and L. Twenty-one is a request for funding for design permitting and construction administration services for a streetscape along O'Hare Avenue and Empire Street. Twenty-two is a request to authorize the purchase of lighting at Pepper Hill Park Baseball Fields. Number twenty-three is a request to approve the bid award for Oak Terrace Preserve Phase Three. Twenty-four is a request to approve a bid award for refuse trailers. Twenty-five is a request to approve the bid award for a vacuum street sweeper. Twenty-six is a bid award for refinishing operable partitions. Twenty-seven is a request to approve a bid award for carpet installation. Twenty-eight is a request to approve the bid award for woodwork refinishing. Twenty-nine is a request to approve the bid award for side scan sonar. Thirty is a request to approve the bid award for resurfacing roads in the city of North Charleston and Dorchester County. Thirty-one is a request to approve a proposal award for a knuckle boom trash loader. Thirty-two is a proposal award for a walking excavator. Thirty-three is a request to approve funding for the replacement of a damaged garbage truck.
Have a motion?
So move.
Second. Motion and a second, in discussion on any of these items.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I will be supporting all but twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight.
Got you, sir. Anyone else? Hearing none, the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Astle?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Mr. Jameson?
Aye.
Mr. Olds?
Aye, except twenty-six, seven, and eight.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Hart?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Stigler?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mayor Summy?
Aye.
Motion carries as reported.
This past Monday, there was a funeral for one of our neighborhood leaders, Joby Thompson, who had been active in the Dorchester Road Corridor for years. Joby had a rough last couple of years, but he never let it stop his work in trying to enhance and improve the quality of his community, and we just want to acknowledge that he is going to be missed by the city for the services that he provided, and we know he's in a better